Okay. So we have a motion to approve the budget revisions presented.
I would make that motion.
Okay, all those in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Okay, my name is transfer.
We have one, and that is to transfer $1,000 from 703-109 to 703-110 Sheriff's Department.
Any other motions to approve the wireline transfer?
So moved.
All those in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Okay, uh, we've got the brown folder we have each meeting. It's the invoices and bills for the last, since the last meeting. And, uh, all this been reviewed by the commissioners. I make motion to approve them as presented. All, those in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Okay. New business. Consider repeal or non-repeal of amendments and statutes proposed. Ludwig, are any trying to address that?
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
To follow up on our public hearing that we conducted at 9:00 this morning. And for purposes of the meeting today. The county commission has proposed a updated E-911 ordinance, which would, if passed, replace our existing 911 ordinance that was adopted in 1995. The existing 911 ordinance established standards for the county 911 emergency system and imposed fees of $2 per month on telephone wireline customers in their county. In order to preserve the integrity of service to county residents, the county has undertaken to upgrade the E-911 system with the latest technology available. Since the existing 911 fees have not increased in the county since 1995, they are now insufficient to fund necessary technology upgrades to the system. It's therefore proposed that the fees be increased on residential wire customers from $2 to $4.50, business customers from $2 to $8, PBX lines from $2 to $8, and Sentrix lines from $2 to $8. Additionally, the proposed ordinance would update language to reflect operational differences in the system since the original ordinance was passed in 1995. The proposal was published by a Class 1 legal advertisement on February 20th, 2025. The proposal was also published on the county website. Notice was made through social media and a meeting notice was made available in accordance with open meeting requirements. As I mentioned this morning, we had a public hearing at which no comments were received. Additionally, the county commission received no written comments. So at this time, it was appropriate for the commission to consider adoption of the ordinance if it so desires.
Okay. As our attorney has stated, we had the public hearing this morning on this amended E-911 ordinance. Do we have a motion to repeal the current 911 ordinance and replace it with the proposed ordinance?
I would make that motion.
All those in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Could I just make one comment? Um, I, um, I just wanted to make sure that it's on the record that, um, our emergency communication center has been upgraded, as it was mentioned in, um, the previous, um, discussion, but that those upgrades were absolutely necessary in order to make sure that, um, uh, our residents and surrounding county residents are served properly in case of emergency. And with that being said, those expenses incurred have been over, um, $5 million and there will continue to be upgrades required. So that therein lies the reason and the necessity for the increase of these fees from the original implementation in 1995. So the commission has been very cognizant of expenses and costs to our residents, but this is a necessity that all of our residents must have in order to make sure we, um, have these services and therefore our need for putting in place these increases on these charges. So I just wanted to make sure that was recognized and on the record.
And part of these improvements have been completed, as you say, and we still have improvements and work to be done yet, due to the next year or so. Okay. Resignation of funds has passed through from the West Virginia Governor's Office. We have our Civil Air Patrol to be used for capital improvements for the composite squadron building.
So we have, um, uh, some representatives from our Civil Air Patrol here today. And, um, if they want to come forward and, um, provide us some information about their program and just let us know, um, what they do and how the program is within the county. We'd love to hear.
Thanks for having us. My name is Captain Chris Bishop. This is Lieutenant Gabriel Poe. Excuse me. Lieutenant Ryan Poe. We represent the Greenbrier Composite Squadron located at the Lewisburg Airport. We're an officer in the United States Air Force. We provide a variety of services through that portion of it, but our main focus is with the program. The funds are intended to revitalize the building. If you visit our site, you might actually recognize that we have the papers on the front door. It's an old Long Island Silver's building. So we do a lot of great things and I'll leave that to Lieutenant Bishop to you a little bit more to mention about our program.
All right, well, thank you, Captain Bishop. And, um, as you mentioned earlier, yes, I am Lieutenant Gabriel Bishop. I am the squadron's cadet commander. And, um, recently, we've been up to quite a hit, I would say. We've been providing our cadets with many unique opportunities. One in particular had a man by the name of Steven Snyder come down to the squadron building and share with us all of his drone piloting classes. And that is uniquely for the cadets at Greenbrier Composite Squadron. It's going to be kind of like a six-month course and he'll come in once every month. And, um, if cadets pay attention, take notes, and, um, take the steps that he advises us to take, we'll be eligible to take a test to get our drone piloting license. That's just kind of, um, one thing that our squadron specifically does. But, um, what about Civil Air Patrol as a whole? What does Civil Air Patrol do for people around our age, 12 to, um, to 18? Well, Civil Air Patrol, um, I, I tend to say that it, it really shapes the leaders of our future. It is a program that really focuses on a lot of character development and understanding within leadership. Because anybody can really just open up a book and read about leadership, you know? All the different types of styles and circumstances you may be put in. But what about experience? I believe that's what Civil Air Patrol uniquely provides the cadet. An experience and an opportunity to practice what they learn within the leadership. I would say one event in particular, an NCOS, which is a non-commissioned officer school, is a wonderful opportunity that will allow cadets to teach others about their leadership experiences and how to be a leader. And it allows other cadets to learn how to be a leader. It's like, um, over the weekend course, it's great, it's a whole one-on-one thing. But I'm just, um, I'm just touching up on a few events here. But there is a lot of stuff that Civil Air Patrol provides, even outside of leadership. The program is, of course, very big on aerospace. Of course, it's in the name of Civil Air Patrol. And, um, one really cool thing that we provide our cadets is the unique opportunity to fly in a plane, well, specifically fly in a plane. We tend to fly cadets around in a Cessna. And, um, of course, they're in the plane with an instructor pilot and they're given the opportunity to take control and actually fly the plane around while getting an in-depth explanation from the pilot about how everything works and why it works. And, um, of course, there's a lot of other activities that we can do within aerospace, such as rocketry. We have built a model rocket before and I'd say that's quite fun. And, um, another thing that Civil Air Patrol provides is emergency services. Now, some of you guys make a question, how can like a 12 or 15-year-old contribute to emergency services? Well, Civil Air Patrol has these things called SARXs, which is a search and rescue training exercise. And, um, that can be from a one-day to three-day training course, just out in the woods. We provide cadets with the essentials that they need to pack up for either 24 hours or 72 hours. And we teach them all the things that you need to know when going out searching for something, like orienting themselves on a map, knowing how to use a compass, but most importantly, locating the target. So, um, through many classes and a lot of dedication, cadets can become ground team member certified and actually contribute to emergency services. And, uh, that's just a few things that I listed that this program can provide. But there is a lot more that this program can open up to cadets who are really motivated and want to follow through with a, um, a strong career path in their lives. And I believe Civil Air Patrol is a perfect opportunity for anybody who's interested in what it provides. That's, that's all I have to say about it.
Regarding the pathway careers, Lieutenant Poe can speak on that based on his upcoming adventures.
Good morning, I'm Lieutenant Poe. And, uh, as Captain Bishop said, I've actually enlisted in the United States Air Force, leaving for basic training in May. And that's all because of CAP. You know, a few years ago, I had no thoughts of a military career, but CAP showed me really what the benefits of it can be, you know? Through learning how to march already, learning the chain of command structure, leadership, it's given me an opportunity to kind of see what military life is like and also to talk with veterans like Captain Bishop here about their experience in the military. And so, uh, for anyone who might be thinking about serving their country or who doesn't really know what they want to do in life, CAP is a great program to sort of broaden your spectrum of ideas.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys coming today and being the presenters. And then we, so whatever, call my wife up. See you, see you people here. Done a lot, I like to help the, a lot of the United people in the county progressive area in the air travel area, being pilots and that different things. And just their, um, their development as gentlemen. And so I appreciate y'all coming today. You want to?
So this is a, we are just serving as a pass-through for these funds that have been awarded. They, these have come, we were, a letter that was received. These, um, $5,000 for the composite squadron building, which is located at the Greenbrier Valley Airport. And, uh, these funds came through the office of Senator Jack David Woodrum from, uh, previous governor Jim Justice. And, um, so we wanted to invite you all here today to make sure that, uh, you're able to share your information and provide the opportunity for everyone to, uh, learn about the Civil Air Patrol and then for us to be able to, um, get these funds to you. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
And, uh, we would invite you guys and you want to present your, uh, present your.
Oh, sorry. Got my maid stand.
Thank you, Oliver. Appreciate you being here.
Good luck in your military career.
And you all are welcome, you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to leave, obviously. You have some other duties for today, so, um, you are welcome to leave if you would like. Thank you all for being here.
I agree on our agenda, it's good, you're on. So we move on to number four. Consider new hire application to fill vacancy for assistant prosecutor. And since she's not here yet, can we, it would be hard if we drop back to the end of the agenda.
Just in case.
Number five, consider new hire employment applications to fill two vacancies for dispatchers at Greenbrier County 911 Center.
Morning. Morning, Mr. Fisher. Um, I've got two prospective employees to discuss briefly with you this morning. The first one is Ashley Capaldo. Ms. Capaldo, uh, for the last three years, has been staying on mom. Prior to that was an employee at Rescue. She's currently enrolled in an online information technology course and anticipates graduating in September of '25. She's got quite an extensive background. We feel she's going to be a great asset with her computer skills as well as her personal interpersonal relationship skills. She's completed two rounds of interviews with us and we think she's going to be a great addition to our team. You want to do in midly or go into?
I'm still in midly.
Sure. And she's successfully completed our background investigation and the drug screening.
Do we have a motion to approve the new hire of Ashley Capaldo?
So moved.
All those in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Thank you. The second is Kyle Brisenstein. Kyle currently works at the Homestead in their event setup department. He has an extensive background in, um, computer skills. He's also a certified firefighter and firefighter one and firefighter two. So that brings a unique, um, background for communicators when dispatching fires for our folks. So he's got a leg up on that regard. He's very skilled in computers. He also has passed, has submitted to, had two interviews with us and passed our background investigation as well as the drug screening.
So we have a motion to approve the new hire of Kyle Stephen Brisenstein?
Yes, sir.
I'll say move.
All those in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Aye. Can you spell his last name for me?
Yes, it's B-R-I. Yep. B-R-I-S.
B-R-I-S-E-N-D-I-A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one.
Separation employment, uh, Luke, where is that? From the Greenbrier County 911 Center. His date of hire was 11/9/24. Don, do you have anything to say on that one or?
No, just that, um, he was a great employee. Unfortunately, he had a family emergency arise and he needs to provide care for his aunt. Is that okay?
So do we have a motion to accept the separation of employment for a week or so?
So moved.
All those in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number seven, consider new hire employment applications to fill a vacancy for Deputy Sheriff of Greenbrier County Sheriff's Department.
Morning, Fisher.
Good morning.
Yeah, I would present Cameron Pike for employment Deputy Sheriff. Cameron did pass civil service tasks. PT test. He was an excellent enlist for hiring and was locked. Extensive background check was completed. He passed it all, no issues there. He recently separated from active duty in the United States Army. And is currently in the reserves, but I think his term runs out in July. Good young man, local kid, grew up, runs food. Currently lives in Chongco with his wife and a couple of children. I'd be happy to give him 20, about 30 years. So I would like him to be considered for, to fill the slot. He'll make, uh, number 30 and have one more to actually be 100%. So he recently tested, I think he's going to give another month for his next testing. He's full staff, we haven't been full staff, but two and a half months in the last 16 years. So I would like to be the sheriff of God as full staff.
Is that C-A-M-P-R-O-N?
I think it's K.
K-A-M-P-R-O-N.
Yeah. And it's Pike, P-A-C.
Yes, P-A-C.
Yeah, Cameron Pike. Okay, do we have a, uh, motion to accept the new hire application for Cameron Pike to the Greenbrier County Sheriff's Department?
Yeah, I would be happy to make that motion. Cameron is a very good young man and, and like you said, would be a great asset to us if we're able to keep him for the longevity of a, of a good career.
Absolutely, we hope you say.
And, uh, Kelly, did Mark give us a application and information on that?
I don't have anything. I was, I was gonna say, I think I forwarded it to you all.
Yeah.
She should have it, the originals though, but if not, we'll get it to you.
We appreciate it, sure. Number eight.
She made a motion.
I made, I made a motion.
I thought you made a motion, I thought we did, I'm sorry. All those in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Let's go ahead and back up so we don't tie her down for too long. Consider new hire employment application to fill vacancy for assistant prosecutor in Greenbrier County Prosecutor's Office. And we have Nicole Campbell with us today, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney.
Yes, I'm just asking for Josh Edwards to be able to fill the opening for the Assistant Prosecuting Attorney position that we have. He's been at the Public Defender as the chief in the last 17 years. So I think bringing him over to the good side is in the best interest of the county. And so that's what I'm asking for today.
Do we have any, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll say move.
Do we have any discussion or comments?
I would just make note that, and to confirm that there is funding in your budget at this point in time for this position and for the, for the remainder of this budget year, fiscal year.
All right, thank you.
You made a motion, all in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Thank you. Consider appointment of a new member to the Farmland Protection Board. I'll give that to you, it's your number on there.
Okay, sure. So we have a vacancy on the Farmland Protection Board, David Hamrick, whose term, who served, um, two four-year terms. And by code, that is the length of time that individual can serve on the Farmland Protection Board. So David has served his term out and, um, uh, the board has interviewed and, uh, gone through, um, some different, quite a bit of discussion. And the name that has been brought forward from the Farmland Protection Board for our consideration is Mr. Mike Moore. And, um, Mike is, um, VP at People's Bank and here in Lewisburg, lifelong resident of Greenbrier County and does have interest in serving, um, in this position. And so, um, with the request of the board, he, um, they would like to have him considered to fill this vacancy left by David Hamrick. I would make, I would make that motion, yes, sir.
All those in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
Okay, consideration is through, uh, 2025, 2026, Greenbrier County Fiscal Year Budget. We've worked on the budget, we've had three sessions to work on it. And, uh, have enough what I think is, uh, budget that will cover us for the next year and also sets us up for, uh, the future in the years to come. So, any comments on that?
Uh, no, I would just, um, just make note that, um, every department has presented their budgets for our consideration. And, uh, um, we have cut, uh, in some places. Unfortunately, there were some increases in other places. But, um, I think every department and elected official has responsibly submitted a, um, a very good budget for each of their respective departments for the coming year. And, uh, I also, um, you know, think that in the position where we're in in the county right now, our elected officials do a very good job of management of their funds within their departments. And so that helps us considerably when preparing, um, our budget for the next fiscal year. And so I really appreciate that aspect of, of helping us with that good information and those specific numbers. So, uh, it takes quite a bit of effort to go through every line and make sure that, um, everything is in order and we're meeting the requirements of state code as well as the West Virginia State Auditor's Office. But I feel like that the three of us, as well with our clerk and, uh, our county commission assistant have gone through all those budgets and done a very good conservative effort to make sure everybody's spending is in line and, uh, um, everybody is provided with what they need for the coming year to be able to serve our residents best.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to thank all the folks sitting up here that worked on it and also all the officers that worked with us. I think to spend more time and get it more comprehensive and dive into the budget and increase this. Mr. Tensher said, we increased where needed, we decreased where we saw that was possible. It's a conservative budget that, uh,
Yes.
that's, uh, we made sure that every amount was covered, but not excessive. So, so.
I will have to say, I enjoyed working with all of the elected officials in doing the budget. It's, uh, it's my first budget, you know, with the county commission. I'm not a stranger to them doing them in another elected position. But it has been, we were very thorough when we went through everything and Kelly was a huge help and Robin was a huge help. And we were able to, I'll, I'll go further and say that we were able to squeeze in a raise for all of the, the employees of the courthouse at a rate of 8%. And our sheriff's deputies will be getting a 10% raise. I think it's well deserved. We have wonderful workers here in our courthouse. We have wonderful deputies. And with the cost of living and everything, that's, I think that's the least that we could do for them at this time.
Might sound like a pretty hefty raise to a lot of counties in good financial shape. We won't be able to do this type of raise. We need that now, that's how I told these students at our meeting yesterday. It was, uh, we felt like we're in a good position to do it now. It won't happen again next year, but we, uh, we're glad that we were able to do it.
Not saying that we're not going to be in a good financial position next year, but in that same respect, as Lowell said, we, we do have a 16% raise that everybody is incurring on health insurance. And so, um, while that 8% raise doesn't compensate for that, the county is covering that 16% increase. So that, again, is not being pushed over to our employees. We're very fortunate that we're able to cover that, but.
A portion.
14, excuse me, 14. Correct, yes, I apologize, 14% of the 16% to make sure we stay at our 80-20 rate of coverage for our employees. of coverage for our um employees.
All right, new uh employee handbook coming out, we'll have a change to 80/20, so because the increased cost of the insurance to the, you know, if we didn't, um, it would negate the increase itself, so. But, we will say in the future at 80/20, as the insurance is up, we'll cover our portion and the employee will have to cover their portion. We can't keep it, we need it.
We'll have to evaluate that. We'll have to evaluate that every.
We're gonna stay at our 80/20.
I will add to that as well, for the past two years, the county has actually been covering 82% of the health insurance premiums, um, so I think we've been, the commission has been going above and beyond what, you know, what has been asked, and uh, so I think getting back to the 80/20, it will require a small increase from the employees, but I think, I know that the, the raise will definitely more than offset that and, and help out with uh inflation.
We'll, we'll do everything we can to keep down the cost to employees down, as, as he had raised their rates, we can all do simply. So, I want everybody to understand that, so. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the budget as presented?
I think part one of this.
May I comment real quick?
Yes, sir.
Um, I for one appreciate that. Um, uh, I appreciate y'all's hard work on that, Kelly and Robin as well. And I can tell you that to keep good police officers and good tax deputies is becoming um increasingly more difficult, um, and with this raise and, and of course, uh, the county eating a lot of the in- increases in the insurance, greatly assisted, uh, elected officials and keeping their good employees, and you know, we have great police in, in this county, not just my department, but all departments, um, so that when they are rewarded with, with this type of raise and with this, you know, the county pretty much taking care of them, um, it really helps retain those good employees and lets them know that, hey, we appreciate your hard work. Um, so I am eternally thankful for the county stepping up and taking care of this.
Now I echo that, thank you all. I did too, thank you all.
I appreciate that.
Well, and it is, and, and just to continue the, the point there, it is very hard for counties to provide rewards, it's very hard for, for any government entity to do uh things that private businesses are able to do for their employees, and so we are held to a different accountability for that. We are not able to, um, we're not able to provide bonuses, we're not able to have um uh pay used county funds for meals over a certain amount and, and different things that occur in private business um for employees. So, um, for the general public to understand that, you know, raises and um uh insurance percentages, coverage is, is really the only thing local governments are able to do to provide um for their employees, because our hands are tied in, in providing any other type of incentives. So, um, as you as elected officials, you know that, but I, I think that is something that is not widely known or recognized in the public, and so it is very hard when we're unable to do certain things that may be able to be done at private business for employees. So, um, I think that is very important to be noted.
And much appreciated.
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion too.
I, I would make, uh, did you want to make a motion or?
I want to rescind my motion to adjourn.
Well, and, and I would, and Lowell, if, if Rupi wants to make the motion, we do want to share the numbers of what the budget actually is.
2 million.
To provide a balanced budget in the motion. Are you gonna make the motion or?
Yeah.
That's the amount.
So I make a motion that we approve the 25, 26 uh fiscal year budget in the amount of 20 million 715,830 dollars. A good balanced budget.
Uh, and this also, uh, with that motion, I'll um just make that this, this has to be forwarded on to the state auditor for approval, we're just approving it here within our county, and will go forward for consideration by um the state auditor.
As with a lot of times, uh, our budget for each year has to be approved by the state before it goes into effect, and we have to send that in here in the next couple days.
Yep.
So anyway, uh, we've got a motion on the floor to approve the budget as presented, all those in favor, signify the same now?
Aye.
And uh, now you can make your motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, oh, one before, well, we can do it after, we can adjourn and, but I would like to um, uh, I would like to introduce our guests today.
Uh, all those in favor of motion to adjourn, signify the same now?
Aye.
So we have a few guests here today. Uh, we have Jennifer Piercy from Senator Caputo's office. Um, uh, we have Shelley from uh our courthouse facilities grant um program in Charleston that uh our courthouse has profited from or benefited from very greatly, um, and we appreciate that support. Uh, we're gonna give a tour here um following our meeting, and we have Jonathan Hall from uh um Representative Carol Miller's office. So, would any of you all like to say anything while, while you're here? We appreciate your visit, we'd love to.
I would just like to say, um, anytime I can assist you guys with obtaining our grant, um, our grant application will have been in June for next year, and um, we'll go through the end of September. I'll be glad to work with you guys um on getting the application completed. I will review it ahead of time if necessary, give any advice or suggestion, anything I can do to help you guys get your funding.
Thank you so much, we appreciate that. And we appreciate the support that the organization has provided to us.
I wish, I wish we can increase our, our funds due to the cost of inflation, but we haven't been able to do that yet, so.
Well, it might be noted too, that they were able to help us with um our sprinklers and stuff for the, this, our renovation and everything, so that was a huge.
Yes.
Grant that helped us.
The courthouse, the original courthouse has now, um, has all three floors have sprinklers and fire suppression system, so that was um partially funded through the courthouse facilities grant program, and we appreciate that.
Yep. Now on to the next.
Yeah. Well, we hope we don't have another renovation or construction project in the near future. And Jonathan, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
We're just glad you're here. Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, I'm gonna hit, and, and let me into this one.